I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Ms. Karstafen.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Brubaker.
Here.
And Mr. Gebel.
Here.
Great. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the October 16, 2019 Lary School Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Kevin Brubaker. To his right is Board Member Jim Bax. I'm Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member Annie Karstafen. To her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slosh. And to her left is our award-winning Treasurer, Joy Clicker. Okay. We're starting off today with a very exciting presentation from Academic Services. Natalie, you want to come forward and talk a little report cards, huh?
Sure. So, thank you. Natalie Matthews, Director of Academic Services. And today I have a presentation on our state report card. And I just kind of want to set the -- make sure my clicker's working here. I checked it like 10 times before.
Well, that was quick.
I know. I was told five minutes. Molly is an amazing teacher. Part of my presentation.
All right.
Try the space bar.
You can just drop the mic.
Space bar, maybe?
You do have a copy in front of you also, in case we had some technology problems today. But the purpose today really is to explain the six components of what makes up our report card. Go ahead, Brian. Do you want a copy so you can -- to share our district's data? And then to kind of share what our next steps are based on that data. Just kind of as an overview, in case you haven't had an opportunity to look at the report card. So, there are six grades that make up the overall component grade. Two categories, which are achievement and progress, are worth 20 percent each. So, they're weighted more heavily than the other four areas, which are graduation rate, gap closing, improving our K-3 literacy readers, and then prepared for success. There is something new to the report card this year that was not in place last year. There's a component point value given to each of the grades. Okay. So, this is our overall district report card. There is a report card for each individual school. So, you can drill down to that if you go to our Ohio Department of Ed website. So, you'll see that our overall grade is a D. And then each of the components, that I'll explain a little bit more in detail over the next few slides, what each of those mean when you take a look at that at a glance. It doesn't tell you a whole lot. So, I'd like to talk through each of those components. And you'll see the one that is gap closing. Last year, we had a D. So, I wanted to make sure we pointed out that the 2019 report card showed an increase overall in our grade. That is C. Okay. Just to make sure, so sometimes there's a misconception around the grades within a report card. So, I'm going to start with a C. And a C actually shows that a student, a school, or a district makes the expected growth that was projected for that school, district, student. So, a C is sometimes considered maybe not an amazing rating. But a C is showing us that we made the expected growth. So, I wanted to make sure that's really where our standard is. An A or a B is showing more progress than was expected. And then a D or an F is there's evidence in place that the students are making less than what was projected for them to grow. Just so we're all kind of on the same page with what those letter grades mean. So, on this slide, I took our overall component grades by school. So, the district is listed at the top. And you'll see 2018. And to the right of that is our 2019, by district and then by each of our individual schools. And what I really want to highlight on this slide is that 17 of our schools in their component grades, 17 grades were increased, a whole letter grade or more. So, although we're seeing some Ds and Fs, and we don't like that, we want to see a higher grade level, it's really important for us to note the progress that is being made and the shifts of where those letter grades are going up from one year to the next. On this slide, you'll also see an NR. And an NR means not reported. So, for example, I use my remote here. You'll see graduation rate wouldn't be appropriate for Eastern Heights because there's no students that we don't have 12th graders at Eastern Heights. So, that's where this NR is coming into place. Then for the K-3 literacy, only the schools that have students in kindergarten through grade three would receive a letter grade there. Okay? And please feel free to ask any questions at any time.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Down at the bottom, EEVC.
Yes.
In 18, they were both Fs, and we jumped all the way to As?
Yes.
I mean, that's pretty huge.
That's fantastic.
How does that happen?
Well, and you'll notice too, I want to, since you pointed that out, you'll see there's some other jumps. Like, we'll see Crestwood right here. Or, I'm sorry. Yeah, so going from a C to a B. There was another one that I wanted.
Franklin.
Franklin, yes. Thank you. An F to a B for gap closing. So, depending on the component, what that means, when I get into what the components mean, I can explain that more. But for instance, gap closing is taking a look at our subgroup of students. So, maybe the students in that subgroup of economically disadvantaged or our students with special needs made a larger growth than was expected. So, that's why you're seeing that jump. And sometimes it just happens to be the groups of students. Now, at the village here, we just have preschool and kindergarten, just so everybody's kind of aware of where we're at with that. Okay?
Could you?
Sure.
That was based, the kindergarten was based on absenteeism.
Yeah.
The, if we go back to that, to this slide as well, the early childhood center doesn't have as many components, obviously, because of the grade levels. But absenteeism is a component of that as well. So, the district achievement, so that is the first letter grade that you'll see on the report card. And the achievement score is how many students are actually passing at a proficient score or above. So, for us, we get various points based on their passage rate and then how high they're passing. So, there's different categories within the assessment. And you'll see here, we earned 74.7 out of 120 possible points. So, that factors that 53 percent were proficient or above. The students that were above get extra points for their scores. So, 80 percent is a passage rate. If a student gets 90 percent, we get more than one point or percent towards those overall points. Then the indicators met, over here, you'll see this 4.2 percent. So, one out of 24 indicators were met. So, what that does is it takes a look at individual grades and content. Did we meet the target of how many students the state expected us to pass at the proficiency level in, let's say, geometry or Algebra I? You'll see we have the one out of 24. That was for our retake, the students that retook the test. We met the indicator, the targeted goal for that. So, that's why we got the one out of 24 there. But those two scores combined then make up what gave us a D. Progress is value-added scores. You might hear some of us talking about value-added. But that takes a look at where a student starts and where they end. So, what's their growth? So, rather than saying all third graders have to score an 80 percent on this test, it takes a look at where they scored last year. So, they may come to us functioning at a second grade level. And are they leaving us making adequate growth? And so, it's looking at individual students versus an overall blanket passage rate. And so, some of the things I wanted to point out on the progress. So, yes, this F is not, we don't like seeing that. But again, there's lots of things for us to be celebrating when we're looking at the value-added. So, for instance, taking a look at just the value-added component of this progress, all of our schools, and I made these green because we think green is good, all of our schools made growth. So, you'll notice even a school that is still getting an F, they went from a negative 11.3 growth to negative 7.5. That's a celebration. That's, that means our students made more than the expected growth. And they're, and all of our schools did that. Now, you'll notice I put down here nine out of the 11 schools made value-added growth. However, the two that are not highlighted, they're at an A. So, they're performing way above the expected growth. So, this is a huge celebration for us. Then over here, I took a look at content, just as a district. So, the value-added, we take a look at three years of data. We finally now have three years of data for comparison. The test hasn't changed over the last three years. And so, you'll see ELA in '17, we are at negative 13.8. In 2019, we're at negative 3.8. Again, huge, that's huge growth. And that's something we should be very proud of. With math, part of this was, I think, in here, we adapted a new math component. We switched over to a different curriculum. So, we did see a drop here, but we're back and showing growth again. With science, we're making that growth, we made growth again this year. So, overall though, when you combine all those content areas, which make up our overall value-added, negative 19.5, 2018, we're at negative 20. But in 2019, negative 11.1. Again, that's huge growth and something that isn't clearly indicated on that report card that they put in the paper. You know, so these are things that we want to celebrate and that the work that we're doing is showing the progress that we're wanting it to.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, just as clarification. So, if it wasn't a three-year trend this year.
Yes.
Would we have Fs in the value-added?
No.
We would probably have As.
We would say.
For the year.
Yes. I would say between As, Bs, and maybe a few Cs. If we look at the actual one-year data, that's the tricky thing. So, sometimes having that three-year helps. And in our case, we're trending up. So, we're trying to get out of that deep negative that we were in. But what we're, what the focus for us is not just seeing an F. It's where were we? Where are we now? And are we continuing, how do we continue to make that growth happen? So, district gap closing is the one that we jumped. I had shared, we went from a D to a C from '18 to '19. So, this takes a look at our subgroups. So, the report that I highlighted here is taking a look at our graduation rate by subgroup. So, these red dots that you're seeing, those indicate the state's target, their expectation for school districts within that subgroup. So, the purple is all students. But when you take a look at, just as an example, I think it's students with, well, this light blue here is students with disabilities. Hispanic is the blue. We are outperforming in our graduation rate what the state is expecting us to in those subgroups. So, although we're seeing a C, and remember, a C I had shared, is the expected growth that the state set forth us. So, we're making the growth that they're expecting us to and exceeding it in many cases, as you can see, for our graduation. So, this is one of the reports. We also have subgroup data for English Language Arts, math, and our English learners.
So, we're exceeding the growth the state expects and we still get a C minus?
Yes. But again, remember, a C indicates expected growth. And that's, that's a misconception, that's something that isn't clearly stated or put in a newspaper article or when someone pulls that up, we see a C and we think, well, C's not, you know, I want to see an A. But our students are making the expected growth. Kind of just going back to this slide, a C is the starting point. They used to say a C is making a year's growth. They've changed the language around that. A C would indicate the expected growth based on the trend data from other districts across the country, or other districts in our state. Okay. So, graduation rate. This goes back to your question too about, this is the graduation again. But you'll see the light blue, or this blue here is our district data. The black is a similar, districts similar to us that have similar profiles. And then the green is the state, state's data. Again, we're outperforming in our graduation rate the state and districts that are similar to us. So, you'll see this is our four-year graduation rate. Again, you'll see the C, 88.6 percent of our students are graduating in four years. And then the students that are graduating in five years, 87.3. So, again, these are things that until you drill down and break into this report card, we don't see. Improving at-risk students. So, this, this relates to, I'm sure you've heard, Third Grade Reading Guarantee. So, this is something that's put in place, and we are involved in this right now. The parts that I want to point out to you today, so again, this is how well our students are prepared to pass the third grade assessment. And so, we start looking at those students, that early literacy, starting in kindergarten. So, we look at our kindergartners and say, based on the data that we have, are they targeted to pass the third grade test? If they're not, we put them on what's called a RIMP, a Reading Improvement Monitoring Plan. Right now, we are preparing our RIMPs that will go home with parents, K through three, at parent conferences early in November. So, what I wanted to show here was 100, and I just shared this at Windsor yesterday morning, 149 students came to us off-track last year. Oh, I'm sorry. I should probably start with. 615 came to us off-track. 149 of them moved, based on the instruction interventions that were put in place, were moved to on-track, meaning we got zero deductions. And this is what formulates the overall grade here. But that's huge. And when I was at Windsor the other morning, I said, that's fantastic. 149 of our students were moved from off-track to on-track in a course of one school year. When you take a look over here, 94.6 percent of our students were promoted to fourth grade, meaning they passed the OST, the Ohio State Assessment, giving them the score they needed to be promoted to fourth grade. Or, they were given an assessment that has been approved by the state that indicates that they have the skills to move on to fourth grade and be successful. So, 94 percent. Now, 51 percent scored proficient on the state test. What, the difference here is, so you're wondering like, okay, that doesn't make sense. This one, this percentage here relates to the state test. There is a list of approved assessments that will allow us to give a student a second, another chance on a different day, a different type of assessment, to give us evidence that they're able to be promoted to, to fourth grade. So, that, that's what these scores are here. Molly, am I going fast enough? Prepared for success. So, this is, this is showing us, based on this, these assessments, are students prepared to go on to the future, whatever it is, whatever career path they would like to go on to? So, it takes a look at, are they college-ready? And so, we received an F. But I wanted to point out, 20.2 percent of our students earned at least three college credits in high school. That's fantastic. As a parent, that's fantastic to happen in high school. 14.1 percent of students at least took one AP course. So, again, our students are being challenged, we're providing opportunities for our students to be prepared for college and beyond. These, so this number here, I don't know if you can see it, is 65 percent of our students took the ACT. That, so that gains us quite a bit of points. Then we're looking at how many of them took the ACT remediation-free, meaning they took it and passed without us doing anything else in between specific to the ACT. So, these are the things that generate the scores. The 22, 20.2 percent I gained down here, this dual enrollment credit, you get points for that. Our AP students, there's 14.1. That's where these scores are coming from. And I would say we're actually, we just had some conversations about some, adding some AP courses at the high school possibly in the near future as well, to give those students that opportunity.
Question on that one.
Yes.
Are those the district prepared for success?
Mm-hmm.
Is that different for a urban school district compared to maybe a more healthy school district?
You mean the percentage that, us getting an F?
Yeah. Do they modify it at all? Or is it the same across the board?
No. Same criteria, rules for all. Mm-hmm. Which again, we're not comparing apples to apples. So, no, same rules apply. So, now, what do we do? So, again, I was just at a training last week around state data. And they couldn't say enough how we need to keep in mind, one data point is not indicate a student, who they are, as a person, a school, or a district. So, the, the scores that we just took a look at, that's one piece of evidence. It's one data point that we're looking at when we're making decisions about our school district. However, this is another example of the data gained from the, the state tests. This is called, this is from an EVOs report. So, let me just explain this report briefly, and then I'll explain why I put it up here. So, we got all those scores, and it would be easy to say, gosh, you know, we received an F. What are we going to do? What we need to do is drill down into the data and see if it aligns with other data points that we're looking at and giving our students. So, for instance, this report here, this yellow bar indicates our students that are in the lowest, so this, this would be a class of students. This is one of our classes, actually. It's an algebra class. So, last year, or the, over the last three years, our students performed below the expected growth in algebra. So, this is what this yellow bar means, that's over a course of three years. So, this is our top students, and this goes down to our lowest-performing students. This blue bar, so when Anne asked if we were given a grade based on 2019's data alone, would they all be Fs? And I said, no. This, this blue bar indicates how they performed in 2019. So, they were projected to perform down here, our lowest group of students, and they performed up here. Again, something happened there that shifted. These kids were expected to be down here, and they performed up here. Now, we, what we want to see is that blue bar above the green line. But again, over the course of three years, all of these groups of students outperformed what they were expected to. So, then we, then we start, what happens is you start asking why. So, the process of the cycle around what do we do now is, let's celebrate the successes. What, what did we do? What did we change in our instruction, in our classrooms, in our schools? Instructions, resources, materials? What was it that we did? And celebrate that, because we don't want to stop doing that. And then we say, okay, what do we need to improve? What are, what is an area that we want to take a look at? We develop a plan, and we monitor the plan. But this is education all the time. And that's the cycle that we want to follow, looking at multiple data points. Okay, almost done. So, just some frequently asked questions I thought I'd throw out there. What data is included in the 2019 report card? So, again, that's three years of data, 2017, 18, and 19. That NR means not reported, meaning there wasn't a subgroup large enough for a grade in that category, or depending on the grade levels, we would receive an NR. And then, something just to note and mention, just recently, legal updates, the, so you saw data around ELA, English Language Arts, for students. Typically, students are tested in grades three through 10 in ELA. The state just announced they're eliminating the ELA assessment in grade, I should have, in ELA I, which is ninth grade. So, they will not take the ELA assessment moving forward. It's no longer required by the state in ninth grade. And then, to throw another kink in everything, to change things up a little bit, our teacher evaluation system will be changing next year. And the state hasn't released what that will look like yet. But that also factors into our value-added scores.
Do you happen to know what's happening with that?
I do. Not all the fine details, but right now, teachers are eval, what makes up 100 percent of their evaluation is 50 percent is based on observation. So, the principal goes in, observes the teacher, rates them. The other 50 percent is student data, and it's the OST data. So, teachers are getting ratings based on how well a student is performing on a state test. And we could probably have a long conversation about what that means and what our opinion is on that, right? That 50 percent of student growth measures, is what we call it, is going away, and it'll be factored into the overall rubric. So, they will no longer receive a separate rating for how their students perform. The data will be built into the overall rubric, meaning there'll be dialogue with their principal around, okay, what data are you looking at? How many pieces, they'll be required to look at two forms of data rather than just one? And what are we doing in our classrooms based on that data? And the teachers in Elaria schools have data, absolutely. And they look at the data regularly. They're, they talk, I mean, I have to say how impressed I am, since I've come here, being, sitting in meetings and listening to how well-versed they are on their data and how they're using it to drive their instruction, which is, it's very impressive here. Okay. So, just my final little changemakers or test takers. So, we, in Elaria City Schools, really want to focus on providing our students a well-rounded education. It's not about taking tests. And some districts, you know, test-taking, drill-and-kill is important. And I am proud to say that I, that our school district is not like that. We don't teach to the test. We just sat in a meeting today with our cabinet and a couple of our principals, a parent. Franco Gallo from the ESC came, and we talked about what is important, what we believe is a school district. And it's not, we believe that our kids take the state test, and that's all we're worried about. We're worried about respect and trust in raising good citizens. And is taking a test a part of that? But it is just one piece of the puzzle. So, we go beyond the standardized test, which is, that's the philosophy of education in Elaria. Okay. That's all I got. I went over my five minutes, I'm sure Mr. Gebhardt. Any questions?
Any questions, Madam Treasurer?
No, other than when we, you know, the thing that I noticed about this testing, and now we're going to modify, not we, the state is going to modify teacher evaluations. You know, one thing that's handy with that, when you constantly change the measuring stick, it makes it really hard to be accountable for any results. And, you know, and I'm wondering, you know, and I'm wondering it sometimes, and this is just a, this is rhetorical, you know, I'm wondering if there isn't some actual, some actual interest in some, in some areas to keep changing standards so that you can't see trends. And, you know, and it's not a criticism of what you present or anything else, but, you know, that's been kind of just my own personal frustration, is that, yeah, when you, when you, meaning the governing body.
Powers that be.
Continually change the standards, it makes evaluation very, very difficult.
Absolutely.
And so then, so you need lots of interpretation. And I think what happens is when we have a situation like that, and then, okay, when the report cards get reported, you don't get, the general population does not get an evaluation or an explanation like you just gave us. They get.
Here's your straight score.
You know, a, you know, a, you know, a 10-minute article or something like that. And, you know, and it covers the entire county. And then people just start making comparisons, and you'll get a variety of reaction.
Absolutely.
And so.
There's a story behind every grade. And unless you are the teacher of those students, or you're in that district or in that building, you don't know the story. So, and until we start looking at data and knowing the story behind the data, it's not valuable. And unfortunately, the public doesn't get that story.
That's true.
So.
That's true. And so, you know, it's, so it always comes down, so then it comes down to this letter grade. You know, and that's, you know, it's really, it's depressing in a lot of ways, you know? I mean, okay, you show that, you know, a lot of progress has been made, but it's still like, you know, yeah, you're closer to the bar, you're just not there yet, you know?
Yeah.
And so, you don't see that. You just see that you didn't make that grade.
Or you don't see that that child didn't have breakfast that day, or their parent wasn't home all night, and they were home alone, or they went home, and like, we were reading some feedback from our students. You know, they leave school and go to their job, and then they babysit all night their other siblings. We don't see all those stories within that data. So.
I have a question.
Thank you.
On this test, I'm not a big fan of it, but that's a whole nother discussion. Who is the group that, is it the actual General Assembly that actually makes the rules? Or are their educators have say every year in this?
It probably depends on what rule, but I, you know, and I don't know, Anne, if you want.
Yeah. It's, it is our legislature.
It is?
Yes. And, and what they do is they make the, you know, laws we abide by, and then they give that to the ODE to, you know, develop how they're going to implement it. There's a disconnect, because there aren't any educators on that deciding body. Now, I will say, Gail Manning and a few others have been our partners. Joe Miller just sent me a, an email, and I gave him all my feedback, and he said, there are people there that are trying to make the changes. So, I feel good about what they're doing and working with us, especially the Lorraine County Superintendents have really been pushing. So, I, I think what the disconnect is, you have to have educators as part of these decisions to, to make what's right, you know, for the school districts happen.
Even with the change of teacher evaluation starting next year, although it's not necessarily the perfect world, I, I still see it as small progress. So, they're recognizing that we can't evaluate a teacher based on student data, knowing[1777.28] they don't know the story. So I see, you know, we're making some progress in the right direction with those changes, but-
Let alone taking almost 10 points off a composite score in the value-added is almost unheard of.
It's huge, huge growth.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Based upon the information that you've given us tonight with the data, I know that we talked about at the Urban Advisory Committee, taking that data and being able to create your own, you know, score or grade. Is that something that we could do and then publicize for what we feel the grade is, as opposed to just accepting what we're getting from the state, or no?
It's kind of funny, because we belong to a collaborative that Kelly Cogan, who's the Assistant Superintendent in Olmsted Falls, they actually send their banners back to the ODE when they get them, because they've decided they're going to make their own portrait of a graduate for the Olmsted Falls schools. And I will tell you, that is something a lot more districts are jumping on the bandwagon to really let you know, and it's something we've talked about. You know, again, it's not just about these one set of tests. Even the last one, Prepared for Success, a lot of the students right now in Ohio, college is not the only viable option. In fact, we want more students that, maybe to go that way, to go more of a tech career, tech way, and because we're lacking in those trades. So I think they have to come along with the times, and I like what Olmsted Falls is doing, and I think that'll be something we'll be moving into, as most districts will.
Good. Okay. Okay, thank you, Natalie, for your report. Job well done.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay. Very informative. All right, moving along, I believe we do not have any visitors for today.
That's correct.
So we'll move right along on the agenda to board member discussion items. Any board member discussion items? Any updates on our construction or anything you want to share, Jim?
Nothing today.
Okay.
Nothing today. We're keeping, we're moving.
All right.
As long as this weather holds out, we can make a lot of progress.
Okay. Other discussion items today? With none, we'll move along to the minutes. The minutes from the October 2nd, 2019 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Brubaker, and a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurer action items. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first item is the monthly financial report for the month of September 2019. My second item is donations. We'd like to acknowledge and express our appreciation for the donations, and I just want to read through them because they are substantial. The first one is from Binary Defense Systems. It is the cybersecurity applications that we use here in the school district, and it's valued at $108,370. The second one is South Shore Electric. They made a donation of electrical equipment and installed that equipment at the Ely Stadium parking lot. And that donation is valued at $37,859. Ms. Erin Wells presented us with a donation of clothing valued at $100. Mr. Drew Barick presented games and prizes valued at $300. Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories gave us a donation of $100. And Prospect PTO presented us with a donation of $392. My third item is to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures, and that is all I have this evening.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items?
Moved to approve.
A motion by Board Member Bax, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt, questions? Madam Treasurer, on the purchase orders, those were all purchase orders based on timing, correct?
Based on timing.
And what is that timing in our manual?
The purchase order has to be out there dated prior to the invoice date, and the item has to be $3,000 or more.
Okay. So weren't most of these, the two that were on here though, not in within the time requirement though?
That's correct.
And what is the time requirement? A month, or 30 days, or what is it?
Any time, the time requirement says you have to have the purchase order out there with a date that's prior to the invoice date.
Oh, okay.
And it could be just one day off.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Is that, we've talked about this a number of times. Is that something we need to look at and maybe change? I don't know the value of having a purchase order come to this group for a couple thousand dollars, because the date is one day different. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do hear what you're saying, but Ohio Revised Code says that if the date-
Oh, so it's the code?
It's the code. It's the code.
Figures. All right.
It's the code we live by.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers that, I guess, huh? Okay. Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Any other reports today, Madam Treasurer?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Moving along on the agenda to the superintendent action items. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to approve the purchase order for PAXIS Institute. This is a big one. It's out of the School Improvement Quality Grant. We're going to begin our, becoming a PAX district. Also, to approve the overnight field trip for the robotics team to Indiana. To approve the boys' basketball team overnight field trip. To approve the out-of-state field trip for the boys' baseball team. And that concludes my action items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt, and a second by Board Member Brubaker. Any questions or comments? Mr. Gebhardt?
Could you explain PAXIS real quick?
Sure. PAX, it's, used to be called the Good Behavior Game. We have probably about 400, not 400, I'm sorry, 40 teachers that are trained right now. We wrote seven school improvement grants last year, and we granted all of them for a total of $545,000 a year for three years. That paid for the community liaison, the engagement liaison, and also this PAX training. And what it does is it helps students become self-regulating and be good behavior, and gives intrinsic rewards, not necessarily tangible rewards. But we will be training the bus drivers, the parents that get involved. It's going to become a new common language on how, you know, as students move along through the grade levels, on how discipline is handled. So we're really excited about it, and we're going to be training 320 teachers in the November and January in-service. And this ODE is real excited too, because they've had a lot of success with this model.
How does this differ, Ann? How does this differ from PBIS?
It is something you can use to enhance the positive behavior instructional supports. So it would be a program used as one of those positive behavior reinforcements. So it's a way of doing it. PBIS is just the overarching, like, requirement mandate from the state, which there is one. This is what we're using to achieve some of that.
Okay. Other questions, comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, before we move along, I think we're a little short. Did you have any comments on your financial report or anything like that? I'm sorry. You got right into the donations, and were there any items you wanted to point out or discuss on your financial report?
No, I didn't. We're currently in the midst of putting together the five-year forecast.
Okay.
There were quite a lot of changes with the state budget that came out, and that has kind of thrown our five-year forecast for a loop, but we're working on that. And it's not, it's not required to be passed by the board now until November 30th.
Okay.
So we'll bring that to you in November.
Okay. Was there any questions for the board on the financial report?
No.
Okay, good. All right. With none, I apologize, I skipped right over that. Okay, so we completed the action items. Any superintendent other report, Madam Superintendent?
Not tonight, but I do have personnel action items.
Okay.
First, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff. Dawn will be replacing Dana Minor, who moved to Columbus, so she had been making the commute. So she finally, we were able to find someone to replace her. To approve the supplemental contracts to the following certified staff member. To approve the following game workers for the athletic services. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts. These are mostly the winter sports, as you can see. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff member. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff member. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff. You can see, we're getting more substitutes, which is a good thing. To approve the one-year limited contract for the following classified staff. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member, Personal Action, excuse me. Motion by Board Member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any questions or comments? I do have a quick question on the coaches.
Mm-hmm.
I recently read an article about how hard it is to get coaches for the younger kids. Are we running into that issue also at maybe the middle school and levels that we're having a hard time finding coaches?
We are, in fact. We may have to look at, Mr. Bezinski, you might be a part of this, we may have to look at not having one of the sports, or?
We just had a, I came from a faculty manager, which are the athletic directors of each school, and we have the principals and faculty managers. And right now, we're hurting for girls' basketball. We reached out to Tony Brown, and he's trying to give us some, and we're hoping we're going to be on the next four maybe. But right now, we would have to combine the one seventh-grade girls' team, one eighth-grade girls' team, and maybe practice over at West. That is our last concern, but I couldn't agree more. It's difficult to find coaches, and I don't know why that is. Being a former coach myself, getting younger kids on a whole different level.
Sure. Okay. All right. Well, please keep us abreast of that. Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent report for us this evening?
Just real quick, I want to remind everyone, we have the annual tailgate, November 1st. We heard it's going to be 75 and sunny.
You heard that, huh?
It does. Hopefully, it'll be nice enough, we can christen the new pavilion out there, but if not, we'll have it at the high school, depending on the weather, right?
Depending on the weather.
Yeah.
Different seasons.
Okay.
There you go.
Roast marshmallows next to the eejus. But other than that, just, things are going well, building projects going well, and a lot of positive feedback recently from a lot of events going on. So we're having a great first quarter.
Good. Okay. Super. Thank you. Okay, we do not have any Board of Education items, and we do not have an executive session needed for this evening. Any other items for the good of the cause by this governing body?
I would like to thank our superintendent, and our treasurer, and Natalie, and Denise, and the board for coming to support me on last Saturday evening. It was a wonderful event, and I was so proud to have all of this support from Elaria City School District. Thank you so much.
My highlight was meeting May. Annie's mom, yes. She was wonderful. And she, you could tell how proud she was.
Yeah, my family was there. They came out in big numbers, yes.
They did.
This board is also, this board is also very proud of that accomplishment, Annie, so good job there. Okay, any other items here? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.